Incomes that need to have, I mean if you say a $250,000 home and you take 25 off for a down payment, four and a half percent, that's a 1,400 or $1,100 payment. Add taxes and specials, it's about 1,500 bucks. What is your debt to equity? It's about 25 percent, so four times that. You have to have a family make 72 grand. You rack that up to 300,000 and take the payment, they have to make $86,000. So those are some pretty dramatic differences in incomes that we're asking people just because we don't want these small lots. We're taking away a whole market out of our potential benefit and tax rolls for this city. We want to talk about generating revenue, there's other ways to do it, like you said Sharon. But to say no to this just because we want larger and because if we build a whole big community with just huge lots, when the bottom falls out, all of us are going to be freaking pissed because our houses are going to be worth nothing.
Dave, tell under that, when you take that down payment you have to come up with, that's no yard, that's the window covers, that's not all the stuff it costs to move into a new house. There's a big cost, I don't care what you say, when you start adding it up.
No, and we're not, I'm not a proponent of acre lots either, but 14 apartment buildings, that's...
What do you think, I think you gotta be careful what you... What do you say 14 apartment buildings? What are you counting?
Well, they're right here.
No, what are you counting for units in there?
Four, those are four, right?
Those are like fourplex units. So 14 times four.
If we had an apartment building and it had, what do our apartment buildings have now? The two that we have, where do they have?
I could've done that.
Eight, four, six, I don't know.
Well, no, once she's talking, the one we have in town.
Where are they? I mean, they're not very big.
So you bring up a really good point, that what fits within the community and that's why I'm going to lay out in front of you. Number one, as Jeff mentioned, we're wanting to have some time to work through these things and work with the council on that and we haven't presented that as part of the first edition. We knew the multifamily, well, they might not even get in this summer, you know, as far as the platform, the zoning. But what you see in front of you is consistent with R6 only that you have, it's a conditional use, R6 only allows for duplexes or up to a fourplex with a conditional use. And that's why we laid that out, I'm going to show you what could work. And those would be consistent with a 40-foot lot on the outside, two 30-foot lots in the middle, and then a 40-foot lot on the other side. So it's consistent with the zoning that you have.
That's not, I mean, that's not, I'm not discussing with this consistent with zoning. I'm just saying within our city, you can be consistent with zoning, but it's not consistent with our city. We don't have this many, like you said, when we have two, we're talking, if it's a senior complex and you've got four units connected together, I get that. And even if it's not retirees, but if it's, I mean, there are nice ways to do fourplexes, I've seen them. They're beautiful, they connect by one wall only, they look really nice. And they're not just seniors, they're just people without kids, right? They're very, very nice looking.
Yep.
But 14 of them really seems like a lot. That's what I'm saying, 14 seems, sounds like, wow, that's a lot.
The way they're laid out, I won't argue with you, but the way it's laid out, I got no issue with it. As long as I see some renders of what the buildings are going to look like.
I think if we create a twin home or single-family lots, it's about the same number of...
Single, same M's days.
Exactly.
Yeah, you guys just don't know, I'm not a fan of R6, so it doesn't matter how beautiful the plan is, I'm not a fan of it. If they're a quarter acre lot, I'm okay with that. If we're talking senior housing, I think that's really important, we definitely need that. But when we start talking about this many and I worry, I worry a lot about what our community is going to be in the future. I worry a lot about where the next 10, 20 years are going to be. I've heard from too many cities that when they put in a lot of these smaller lots, that what they end up with in 10 years or 20 years is not at all what we should, what we want in our community. So I'm concerned every time we do this because that's not what I want. And we always have to consider that element that sometimes seems to infiltrate and does it in other cities. So, you know, we're warned, be very careful of what you're planning for because our city has to work like it, like things belong together.
Well, this area is, you know, just because of these areas right here, they're already high density. I mean Prairie View, this area right over here, it's already of this density. So this would be consistent with the general area, region, you know, of this domain area.
But not within the entire rest of our city.
It's not, I'm not looking at the entire rest of the city, I'm looking at, you know, a few block area. So if you want consistency, we have to look at the block area versus the entire city.
But as we're moving further away from the main part of town, typically lots get bigger. They're not...
You're still, you're still north of the lagoons.
Well, and when we sunset them, guess where that's going to be? It's going to be beautiful, right front property. So we have to, you know...
For the area, for the area this is.
But it's still, it fits in there, that's where Lost River, when he did that, you've got bigger lots, it's total sense right there.
On Lost River, you have R6 too, and again, back to my point.
Absolutely, it's perfect in there too, but there's nothing else you could put in there.
That's what I mean, you're a fan of it and I'm not, so we're never going to agree.
No.
But I would really like to see some senior housing.
It's amazing we can talk at times.
Okay, so let's, we're rehashing, we're rehashing stuff now, let's move on here, next.
A few more comments, okay. I think, just, I just have a couple more comments that haven't been talked about. You know, you have a school coming and you have a very large opportunity. You know, the R6 product, it's what's selling right now. And if you want your city to grow, in Lost River, we have six lots left. Out of the maybe 40 that we plotted, we've been open since November, that are $30,000 or less. Those things have fly, they fly off the shelves. And we're going to be out of those lots probably this summer. And the city won't have any of that product to offer. And the people that are interested in moving to Horace and buying a small home are going to move to West Fargo or Fargo. And we're going to lose opportunity. We've got the school coming and you can increase your tax base. And if we don't have approval, you know, then, say, in the next month or two, basically this isn't going to be a 2018 project. And so I just want to let you know that you have a significant opportunity to grow the city by giving us approval. This is a nice development for the product level. The flood issue, you know, we've designed this to city specification. We're using the FEMA flood map, the approved FEMA flood map. So, you know, I guess unless the city has a moratorium on building until additional flood mapping is done, we have met the condition or the city authority. And then lastly, you guys will have an opportunity for any multifamily. You know, if 14 is the wrong number, you'll have the opportunity to tell us at a future meeting, even if you say yes tonight. So I guess I would request that you rezone the property to R6 and approve our preliminary plat tonight. So I have, thank you for the long discussion.
Lucas, explain to me real quick again, if we approve that, what does that mean?
Well, still, we'd have to go back to planning for the final plat. So the city council approves the preliminary, just says that you're okay with the version that they have. My concern is doing these multiple phases again, like they did in Lost River, and I see there's already a Terragarden second edition. And I know that the planning commission did not want them doing that with this development. So that's something to consider as well, going forward with this process.
So your concern is in specific to the first edition, but making sure when we come with the second edition, it's substantial?
Well, not, not doing four lots, you know, like it happened in Lost River.
Those were the, those that they're potentially bringing in the multi, either multifamily or we could push them to do a single family again, but either...
This would be, if you count, if we grow way out here, the multifamily. We're not the two right now.
But I mean, it's how long will it be coming though? You know, it's going to matter weeks, and then we have a second edition, that's what happens.
I don't know, but it could conflict in a few years.
You know, I think we're visiting with multifamily developers to try to find somebody that's interested in doing things that raise our vision, you know, these fourplex count as all units, so.
Would you have a portion of multifamily or all of the multifamily forward and what's the timeframe, do you think we're getting that?
I think that's going to come down to, can we find the multifamily out there? For the reasons I think the gentleman that we're meeting tomorrow would be capable of that.
Yeah, that's not a problem, if that's the concern of the city, we can come back with a larger plat. The plat that you're talking about is probably, you know, there's probably 20 units there. So I wouldn't say that's a small plat. When you, when you compare the plat size to previous plats in Horace, I'd say that's probably large relative to previous plats, but we can...
If they have a master plan, which they do.
But I mean, the concern generally is, as soon as you start doing your improvement district, then are you just going to add this into their, into the cost of the improvement district with the regular addition like Lost River?
Okay, so what you're talking about is just having that whole chunk predefined?
Well, I mean, just you're not saying as far as the money that you're going to start spending for these? And then it's now you have a change order adding Terragarden second edition to Terragarden's addition, then you have enough money to cover that.
So it's essentially saying how many lots would go into that phase two so that we can set those specials?
Well, yeah, it's either going to be one improvement district or special assessment district to cover the whole thing. You're going to do one for Terragardens and then maybe Terragarden second, there's enough money left over. Or you have to do another improvement district now to cover Terragarden secondary, you have cost for publication and stuff. That's going to be one to that.
So essentially minimizing the overall engineering and legal costs.
Yeah, you're trying to keep your specials down.
I think from a planning standpoint, the intention is to bring the first edition forward. And, you know, whether the second edition, how big or when it comes forward, if it's three years from now or six months from now or two weeks from now, that's ultimately good for the city and the growth if it's happening sooner than later. But those are costs, you know, proposals to do the first edition as a single improvement district. And if you do any future improvements as a separate improvement district, and it's a large enough piece of land, I think those costs are spread out. And then in future improvement district, those costs are fixed, whether you do it now or three years from now.
But except if you're talking like two weeks or two months, or even five months from now that you guys get into that, that starts getting into the special thing, we're going to go through two processes with it. What we're trying to do here is cut down on how much special costs.
So I don't think...
That's where I'm going with this, so if there's enough of a span of time there, I get it, but if it's a narrow enough window...
So the question, the question, and we had this discussion on Friday, where the engineering and legal costs that we would incur now, you know, for this engineering and work that we're doing right now, if we end up approving that and it goes, everything gets through, we would take those costs and feed that into the overall special cost. Rather than the city taking on that, you know, having to pay for that out of the general fund.
Right.
So which, right, so that was, that was a strategy. If we have to do it again, then the overall specials for those additional lots are going to go up because we have to go through the legal and engineering at work yet again, but we'll feed those costs into the overall specials.
But that's not a lot of lots to put it into.
I'm sorry, say again?
No, it's not, it's not a lot of lots to put that into.
If I could, if I could answer that...
If they decide to go down that path, that's not our call. Then those additional engineering and legal costs will go into the original lots.
Really, we get two of our specials and we don't sell lots?
Is it going to make that much of a difference? Is the additional legal, engineering and legal?
I'd like to know.
It's the work that we're doing right now to do, to direct Lucas and Jim to do the engineering work leading up to saying this is ready to go.
If I could, the plat that Mr. Croker's talking about... He was talking about adding some lots right along already improved roadways. It really depends on, did we get a multifamily developer to tell us what he wants or she wants as far as how things are laid out? So we're really just talking about plating at that point, which is a survey and going through a process. So there's not additional cost of infrastructure and, you know...
There was a little bit, not a lot, you're right, it's not a lot, but there was some.
Okay, so it'd be a lot less though, what we're...
I do appreciate the comments and we will try to keep the process to a minimum.
So how, if, you mentioned a few moments ago that the lots in Lost River sold very quickly. So within how long a time period?
Well, right now we have all but six under contract. We've closed on eight, seven, and I don't remember exactly how many lots are there, but they're staggered over this year, next year, I mean, they're, they're basically spoken for. So we only can, we have six that are available to the public for purchasing.
So they've been sold within what timeframe, within a year?
Yeah, we started marketing midsummer.
How many total lots, that's not all of the lots, that's just the higher density ones you're speaking of?
Correct, the ones from the 40-foot wide to 70-foot wide lots are selling much faster than our other larger lots.
So to John's point, or Brian's, or I'm not sure who's point was, but...
You can agree with me.
I know we're not, but if, if phase one was to sell at that same pace, you'd be back here in months talking about phase two, and that's to these gentlemen's point that it might make more sense to do everything at one time versus...
Yeah, Jeff, from the time that you came for preliminary plat today, you talked in the 14, 15 bucks, right?
Probably like...
Well, that's, I mean, you know, to your point, if it's going to be this many, then it would make more sense to do it all at once as opposed to breaking the entry to keep that cost, especially when you're talking about a consolidated timeframe.
That's a risk, you're not willing to take to develop these 56 acres at one time, that's, that's a heck of a risk.
Well, we added the benefit, it gives us more time to massage the multifamily a little bit or sanitary.
There'll be enough things in place with this first edition, probably wouldn't be that big a deal for the second edition because it won't be the full everything.
I need a transportation study, I need a sanitary study. How quickly are we going to have the transportation study?
Yeah, they asked MetroCard. I just talked to them about it Tuesday.
Years.
So, we'll have it this year, what month, I don't know.
They have to get this done for the school too, I mean, this is all part of the deal. So this isn't going to be a long drawout, two-year, three-year game. So this is going to happen a lot sooner than what the prior ones would happen, but I can't give you the time.
Councilor Carson, when we did expand the city map that we brought the first, was at 3:00. And that was to show the connection point, and I apologize, Veterans Boulevard label is not in the correct location. That is one mile east, that's actually on 45th Street. So you can see the drain where it connects to Oz, but there's the mark. You can see that 60 Third is the intersection line between that and Cheyenne. All that diverts through Beaver Creek back over to County 17. And, you know, the, the timing of the build out and the ultimate build out of the roadway, when those happen, whether you stage it into a four-lane road and then a six-lane, or how it ends up in a six-lane roadway like 45th Street is south of the interstate. You know, the timing of that is what that study will show you. But just looking at the overall vision, it's pretty, you know, the extension of Veterans, the extension of 45th Street, and then also the east-west, you know, connection to High 100. If you try to get to 94, you'd be, it's pretty clear where that's...
Well, could the backside of this development that you have in the picture sooner or later, I know it doesn't line up, but could we jog it over to the potential date there, or whatever that we're doing to, is that out, down?
Yeah, maybe, wouldn't be right now.
No, but this way along and whatever.
So here's County Road 17, all the way to 94, Veterans, I think dies off here because of the drain.
Veterans will never come through.
And it'll never come through.
And 45th doesn't come to stop anytime soon.
And the border line, the road then jogs over to 17. So just looking at it, you know, I agree with John, I don't think we need a study to determine whether there needs to be an arterial road right through this 56 acres when we're down by the south by the lagoons.
There won't be, there won't be an arterial road in that direction. What I'm going to be concerned with actually is going north, not in your land, going north from the 88th and 76th on the east side of the school.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, there's, nothing's going to go, nothing is going to go through your land there. Just because there's going to be so many years of after we abandon the lagoons before anything happens there.
That's the conclusion that we reached after looking at the city map on several occasions, but... Again, you have a great opportunity to move this through right now. You have capacity with your SSL. As a business, it makes sense.
Can we specify the state again, since we've done so much talking about what specifically is being asked? Is a zone change, an approval of a preliminary plat, are those the two things, Lucas, right?
Rezone from egg to R6 and then the preliminary plat.
Okay.
You did.
We did.
We did.
December 18th.
But did, did we have misinformation sent out to landlords yesterday?
Nope.
No.
We did.
So, okay, you guys get any more discussion on this, or what do you think?
Horse is dead.
Yep.
We beat it multiple times.
I don't think it's...
Back over a few times too.
All right, so what do you guys think? Want to do the rezone?
Well, we know we're not, this is not going to be agriculture fair.
Nope.
So we, we have a proposed plat to rezone this to residential, which is, fits within our zoning used map, correct? That's how it made it through the planning and zoning. So unless we were to say that we were, there was a plan to make this a different zoning option, this is what it is, so...
It makes sense.
I, I, so do we need to vote on each of those options independently?
Yep, start with the rezone.
I will make a motion to rezone this from agriculture to R6.
Okay, okay, so we've got the proposal. First motion on the table from Brian.
I'll second.
The second, John, all right, the other discussion?
We need a roll call on this, or?
The only challenge I have is that R6 does not fit within our medium density.
Okay, noted, all right.
So...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay.
I'd rather go with medium density.
Okay. Sharon's opposed, so, but it passes, okay, so we got the rezone squared away from our preliminary plat.
I move that we accept the preliminary plat as presented with a verification of the flood.
Uh huh, agreed. Okay, David makes first motion on that, you get a second?
Make a second.
Okay, Brian does a second, any other discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to be opposed.
I'll say aye.
Sharon opposed. Okay, we will move on.
Thank you so much for all the time.
Now, the next step is the final plat, which will come...
That goes back to planning and zoning now.
But they'll bring the verification, the thing that Sharon brought up, to planning and zoning.
All right.
Thank you so much.
So next up here, Lucas. He doesn't say anything, I mean, it's actually, I thought maybe he was just kind of faking it here, he's got a blank line here, it says nothing.
Then we don't have anything, we just move on.
Move on.
Yeah, I don't think he has a chance either, I'm just saying.
No, anything?
Jimmy, it says there's nothing under yours either, so what do we got here?
Mine says two things.
I guess, wait, 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 before we move on, Lucas, do you need to, we need to talk about a resolution change or is that okay for meter breaks that for the rate, rate resolution?
It's, I know it's on your agenda.
Okay, all right, that's, okay, that's fine, okay.
All right, Jimmy, you had something though, didn't you?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know why, mine comes up blank, so...
Oh, well, there's a couple riveting things on there, so.
Yes, so the first thing we have...
We'll just have to make sure that Jim gets that stuff to the agenda a little quicker next time, right?
I had it on time.
Right, right?
I had it on time, I can prove it almost.
Almost?
I won't waste our time doing that.
Good, all right, go ahead, man.
Okay, so the first thing we have is change order number two for the SSL that's been talked about tonight. This is the one that has, that increases the price due to Hurricane Harvey, acts of God. I know. And then there's also a increase in the boring underneath the river. After the project was bid and getting the permit to cross the river, I believe it's the water commission looked, um, no, it might not have been...
So the original price was $60, the original price was $16 and went to $72?
Yeah, so when they, when the project was bid, we had to stay 12 feet, I believe it was, underneath the river bottom. When we applied for the permit after everything was in place, got the contractor in place and everything like that, they went back and reanalyzed the sc, reanalyzed the scour and it had to go to 20 feet below the river depth. By doing that, the boring company had to rent a bigger machine and it became a high-risk bore with the depth of cover on it. So they, they requested the increase of, from $12 on the near foot, is it increased by $12? So this change order would be an increase of $28,615.84 for those things. Hurricane Harvey, oh, and I forgot, there's one thing I had to do about coring the manhole on Wall Avenue for the temporary tie-in to get Lost River online. That was $700, I believe.
Oh, that was in addition, so the manhole core, line 30?
Yep, 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 look at the spreadsheet on there, I think I got it, yep, right there, the highlighted item, so, yep, $700 on that.
And this is, this is all still within the...
It is, yeah. We're at, our original contract was 1.235,149.65. And now after the two change orders, the first change order number one was for adding the lift station in Lost River. And that was $143,452. And this one, we're now at 1.407,217.50. So our estimate was in the 1.7 range, so we're still within our contingencies and within our budget on that. So the other thing too to note is that there was two days additional work requested for the additional work. Figured that was justifiable to do, to do that, so...
Two days of additional work, that basically they were, they were going to have to spend the work in the spring anyway, so...
We're, yeah, we're just tacking it on.
Spending that work now instead of later.
Well, this is in addition to the completion of it.
Oh, so they've increased their estimate.
Two days, so, now we're at May 1st, 2018, so...
And Jimmy, before I forget to ask, how far did they get on putting in that lift station up north of the church there?
They got the wet welding, which is the deep barrel part of it. There's a valve bolt that goes on the outside of it, the components that go into it, but the precast concrete structure that's 28 feet deep is in the ground now, so...
I didn't see it go up there, so I wasn't sure what was actually in the ground there, how far they got with it, so, okay, cool.
And the thought was it'd be easier to get the crane out there and get everything out there when the ground was somewhat soft.
Harden, yeah, exactly, makes sense.
So the question, do you need approval with a change order?
We do, we do, yep.
So make a motion to approve the change order for SSL connection.
I'll second.
Okay, Brian does the first, Sharon does the second. Does this mean we need to roll call this one?
Yep.
John, what do you think?
I don't know what to say.
Dave?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Alright, there you go.
Okay, the second thing we've got is the project status report, I emailed that out, that was a little late, sorry about that. Um, the, of note, the items on here, we should look at scheduling a public information meeting for the one hundredth avenue sewer stuff. That is, um, they'll need to do that in a long comment period, so. Whatever works for you guys, I'll make work on my end, if you want to do it like we did before.
Get a schedule, get a schedule.
When do we want to do it? Do you want to do it before a council meeting? I don't envision there being a lot of people, this isn't real controversial, but if we would do it at six before a meeting or something like that?
I guess I'd say, yeah, because I don't know how much.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd say let's do it at six o'clock before a meeting, let's do it in March.
First meeting in March?
I don't see any reason why not to.
Okay.
Meeting in March.
First meeting in March, I won't be here, but that's, okay.
We can wait till the middle too, I mean, just, but we should do it in March.
We need to move this along, right?
Yeah.
So let's, let's schedule first.
I'd say go first, what about the rest of you guys, are we gonna have a forum? I'll be here too, so. Let's just plan that then, Jim, let's put that on the.
Okay.
We'll just, cause they do it at six o'clock prior to their meeting and.
Um, all the projects that we have discussed before, as far as per construction this summer, working on plans and specs. I do want to touch on this stormwater policy deal Perry told me about it last, I believe it was Friday when he stopped by the office. In December of two thousand sixteen, the state did contact Ben, Ben contacted us and we were instructed by the, by the council to prepare this municipal separate MS four permit and policy that goes along with it. Well, this policy can be fairly elaborate and it was drafted once, sent to the attorneys, attorneys provided comment, sent back to us for review and input. One thing that the plan has to have, minimum of these six items, public education outreach, public participation involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site runoff control, post-construction, stormwater management, pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So it's a fairly elaborate system and one of the challenges with this was enforcing it and who's responsible for it with the city's limited staff. There's some discussions ongoing as to who does what, and that's where we're at right now, is trying to identify the roles. There is, the plan is, has been started, it's been, it's gone through its revisions and whatever else, so it is in the play, it in, in the works, so, um, I did receive a text from Ben and he said that there haven't been any violations reported by the city, so I don't know where that.
Who is, who is responsible for enforcing it?
That's where we're at.
That's where we're coming to.
That's where we're at.
So to say there's no violations, if no one's enforcing it.
There's no violations by the health department, is what I'm saying, is the city hasn't been in violation of their part of it. If there's been violations on the sites.
Yeah.
That's something else.
So part of that is their part, their participation in doing the inspection as well, right? But because we haven't had the policy in place, there was nothing to inspect?
Well, we do require it on any job that disturbs acre or more, the contractor's responsible for obtaining the permit and monitoring it. So Lost River had a permit, Prairie View had a permit, uh, the water looping job on Wall did not, because they didn't disturb enough area to require it. So projects of that nature have a specific permit to that project. This is more of an overall kind of encompassing your individual builders on these much smaller than acre light lots and stuff like that.
That's where the, the permit file that being put together is part of that process.
Yes, yes, yep, so.
So typically, who's responsible?
Well, uh, we'll use West Fargo's example, they have staff that's basically stormwater staff and they're from the public works department, so.
So in the interim, we, I guess that's the action for us to identify who is going to do this kind of inspection. Whether it be with me, the city engineer, and that might be you in our, you know, because we don't have anybody, so, I mean, we're contracting out other services like this, so.
So this is a requirement?
Yes.
For by the state health?
This is a requirement because you are close enough or you're in a metropolitan area, typically these aren't required unless you're five thousand population.
I was gonna say, so we get a waiver for some of this or because of our population?
You're part of a metropolitan area and that's how you get.
It's a sin of us being too close to Fargo, West Fargo, so.
Yep, so you get, you get lumped, lumped in with it.
Yep.
But there, if, if someone is caught in violation, there's a fine.
That the city is supposed to.
On a daily basis, not like a fine, period, but a fine like every day.
It can be, that's one of the things in this, in this is how the ordinance is read and how the violations come from that.
The ordinance is that, the ordinance proposal that you guys put together includes that definition, correct?
Yes.
And so the fines, if there were fines, could cover the cost if there's a cost associated? I mean, that's if, that's assuming that if there's fines, right?
Well, fines for remediation to get, bring it back into spec, right?
Well, if, if there's a fine for every day it's out or whatever.
Right.
Lucas, which would, do we pattern that out for West Fargo's?
Yes.
So I thought, we know we talked about this.
It's on Fargo's, West Fargo. I think it's in the Fargo's.
I mean, I think it's gonna be a challenge for, for us to.
We're not gonna be able to do it.
To, because whoever enforces it has to know, has to know the manual.
Right now, the way the ordinance is written is a lot of the authorities with the city engineer.
So right now.
Well, he'd be the only one who knows the manual.
Right, so right now Jimmy is a city engineer, so that's best we can do. Until we get, you know, large enough where we can have some.
As you say, for right now.
Right.
We have to have some insurance.
Right.
This body's not gonna be able to do it.
Right, right.
Somebody's gotta know what they're doing and that's why Jim, I agree.
I mean, in all reality, how many of these are they going to be going on at the same time?
Well, you have every development that comes up.
We'll have the developments and then there'll be some education requirements for the builders, I mean, it's as simple as launching out a concrete truck on a street versus using their containment apparatus.
But they all know that, because all, every builder builds in Fargo and West Fargo and they all know it's the same rules.
Unfortunately, they don't.
Really is a matter of telling them, it's a matter of telling them that we're enforcing the rules.
Exactly, yeah.
Not, not, they don't, it's, they know the rules.
They do, I agree, and they choose to follow them, it's one thing, you're right.
Choose not to not follow them, and that's where we have to choose to find them.
Yeah.
Because we can't have some of those issues we've had in the past.
Well, I know of a one instance where the city staff, as I think Bob got up to Chestnut and scraped up concrete because some concrete truck washed out a little road.
Yeah, I know.
So the point, the point of the matter is we need to get that stormwater policy and ordinance approved, so.
Yep.
That is all for review now, is the proposal that we would approve that at the next meeting?
No, that has to go to planning and zoning, it's put in the land use title.
Okay, so the action right now is for planning and zoning to.
Well, for me to put it on their agendas, then they can discuss.
For this next meeting.
Does that, does that then become part of the developer agreement to include that that is a requirement?
No, just city ordinances that you have to follow.
Yeah, because it has to go, you said it even to a developing, even to a house builder, right? Has to follow these, yeah.
But there's these other things we have to do along with there too, it's that educational part.
There is, the outreach and the education, yeah.
That's the, yeah, that's a series of unfortunate events, right? But it's something, we'll have to, we'll have to come up with that.
Opportunities, we prefer to call them opportunities, not events.
Yes, okay, opportunities.
So.
But it's just those things, we'll have to come up with, with a plan to do that then, so we can go through that process.
And it might be something as simple as on a website, putting up a tab or something on there that.
I would just read through that this afternoon and like, ugh.
So in the immediate action right now is for this to be on the planning zoning act, or agenda list, they'll approve it, then we can bring it on at the next upcoming meeting.
It's alright.
Okay.
Okay.
You got your homework for your Ross. Sorry.
No, I have to know the requirements. Whatever these rules were just gonna pass.
Sight unseen, or you gotta read it, at least once, right?
Move on.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Jimmy.
Okay.
No, it's not too bad, I read through it.
Okay.
Okay, and the final item I have is that I did, I wanted to put in the minutes that I did make a math error on the first change order for law, uh, the SSL. Instead of the total, total contract being one point eight five zero one seven five, it's actually one point three seven eight six oh one sixty-five, so. I had a math error that, uh, I caught the other day, so just wanted to say that.
Well, I think that's probably okay one, huh?
It's, it's an alright one, it's.
Yeah. If you went the other way a half a turn, a half a mill, and it's like, wow, you know?
Yeah, so, I'll just need you to initial my mistake when you get done here, so.
On your forehead, right?
Might as well.
Okay, just checking.
That is.
That's it?
All that I have, yeah.
So actions, uh, on the water meter replacement?
Uh, we, we, I've been looking through the maps provided by the trailer park owner, sitting down with anyone and everyone that I can to try to figure out how that system works. We are to the point now where we think we have a pretty good idea how we're gonna be able to isolate that enough and I anticipate something for you at probably the next meeting.
Okay, so right now, so you, the intention is that we would be able to approve the, the rest of the project so that we can go ahead and start procuring the hardware and contractor to make that happen.
Correct. Yep, yep.
Okay, so when you have that ready, can you send that for review?
Next, next meeting then, we can get on with that then, right? That's what you're anticipating?
That's the plan, yep. Yep.
Good. Okay. We have to go out.
I'm sorry?
I'll leave it in neutral.
Oh, did it stop?
Yeah, I got kicked off too.
I did.
Now it's back on.
But yes, I, the application for the funding for that is in Vance's office, the one question that we had was the local amount that you were gonna add to it, so. With this information, I found out from the trailer park owner, I've updated the estimates, so I'll get that number to Vance and you guys can decide how you wanna.
Okay.
What you want to plug in there for your sales tax, basically.
Well, because I'm, I'm gonna have a little number for some software to go along with that, so. That's why we need to talk about it before we bring it to the next meeting.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Next. Jim, that's it, you're done?
I'm done.
Alright, move on to portfolio reports, John, what do you got?
You know, I just got back to town last night late, uh, but I do want to comment, uh, before I left town, Corey attended the home builders' city night and did a very good job feeling questions, uh, from Bryce and I think there was a very good dialogue, obviously special assessments were, it's a hot topic here, you know? What, what can we do? I'm open for ideas, I mean, seriously, I, we gotta get creative, we gotta do something. Do we need to extend about thirty years, you know, do anything? I, I know that's maybe an easy answer. To me, you coordinate the life of the infrastructure with the term of the payment. You know, do you need to pay up something early when it's gonna last for a long time? And that's been one subject that has been talked about a little bit, um. Obviously, we're growing very well compared to some of the other communities.
Yep.
Uh, the metro area, you know, was back to a little bit of a normalcy. Not a lot of fear, you know, a little concern, but you know, you can't keep on a high pace that you, you weren't for so long. Version's a hot topic, obviously, I think Corey has that for an update later on. But you know, you're really seeing a continuity with the mayors in the, our area, in our metropolitan area and I, I think that's a super important deal. You know, we're already working on sewer, you know, water's a, uh, another one that's coming that we gotta work together on and, and our, there are other issues that, you know, we're already working on law enforcement, you know, but what else do we need to do to, you know, do some regional ideas, so. I think the mayors are really working hard together.
I think that, I think that was just, those are nice evenings to get together and have those conversations.
Absolutely.
So, definitely.
But nice job.
Thank you. Your honor.
Dave. Okay, uh, just to explain to everyone, the, the, on the consent agenda, the payment to me was the cost for posting our city admin um, position on Facebook and on LinkedIn. Um, so that covered all of those charges, it was posted on three or four other locations. Um, so there might be some additional charges that are coming through related to the contract with AD two S, because they did some of it. Uh, we did get twenty-five applicants out of that term. Uh, we selected eight applicants to interview and, uh, through our process to get those interviews, two did drop out, so right now Corey and I, over tomorrow and the next day, we'll be interviewing, or I will be, on the second day with Corey, I will be interviewing six people. Um, if we feel there are three top candidates that come out of those six, we'll choose those and that next step again would be that those three candidates would come and present to the city council at a, at a given meeting. If we feel there's a need for a couple of additional, um, candidates, we would certainly, uh, reach out to some additional. Uh, and again, it is from people all over the country, so it's been very interesting. So that's my update.
Okay, cool.
Looking for your tops, your top six, or they all from all over, or they any local?
Looking forward to that.
Oh, yeah.
I did too, the second time. Uh, there are.
Yes and yes.
Yes, yes, yeah, exactly, yes and yes.
Don't worry, anybody in Florida.
What, what's wrong with Florida, come on? Just take it easy, Russ.
They're not gonna live here.
All over, yeah, I know.
So when you do that through your interviews, are you doing face-to-face or are they Skype?
We're doing a, we're doing a video requirement, is our request is video, if we can't give you a work, it will be phone as a, as they fall back. Um, uh, AD two S has provided us a list of questions that we'll use to provide the same interview with all you, all of them and they did an initial, um, review of all the applicants and provided us a grid of all of the criteria that we needed to help Corey and I look through the list and out of that, um, out of the eight, each of us picked, only two were different.
Yeah, surprise.
So we each picked the same six and then we dropped one of each others and came up with our.
So the two that dropped, were they lower on the, on your ranking list?
Yes, they were on the, so our top, our top six were our top six.
They were good losses. They were, they self-selected themselves.
Self-selected, yeah.
Nice.
So when you reduce to three, um, will they all be in person?
Yes, they will be here at the, at a meeting.
Yeah.
And we will go over the list of questions that we want to have them answer and present, provide them pre, so they can provide a presentation of the same information, so yes, we get a chance to provide any type of questions you want and we can get our final list together.
We got some good candidates.
Yes.
Okay.
I hope so.
Yeah. I have a two, I mean, well, you don't know, you throw the big net out there, you don't know what you're gonna get, so I think we did pretty well. Go ahead, Sharon, what do you have?
Well, that's similar to the MetroCup update, um, they just concluded the process to select a candidate to be the executive director, Michael Max was the interim. Um, they had twenty, twenty-two candidates, um, went through a similar process, um, did some interviews last week with the top, I don't know if it was six or eight and did the final interviews with the top three candidates on, I want to say Thursday last week or Wednesday last week. Um, narrowed that top three, so they invited from each jurisdiction, one person to be on the panel that did the final interviews, of course, it was an open meeting because of all the elected officials that were, that were there. And similar to your process, there was a list of questions and everybody had a copy of that and we just, the, the idea of that process where each person just went down and so John, if one person asked, then, then, then everybody can just ask a question and so they asked all the questions. It was fairly, there was a scoring system, it was fairly unanimous with who, um, was chosen to be the, the candidate that would get the offer of the top three, so the rankings were the same. This morning, there was a special policy board meeting um, because the policy board had a vote to, um, to provide a, an offer to this candidate, so I would imagine they probably made that offer today. The top candidate is from West Virginia, so we'll see what happens if this person chooses to accept the, the offer or not. They're doing background investigations or background checks on the top two, just in case the top candidate doesn't, then you'll have the background check already done on the, the second candidate. Um, so hopefully by the next meeting, we'll know whether this person accepted it or not, and then, well, Wes might know by next week and is your meeting Thursday?
This Thursday.
Oh, you'll know by Thursday then. So the gentleman's then, they made the offer to Bob, Zane's Bob Gordon, so I'm sure you'll, will know by then if he accepted, so. That's kind of the update there, I don't know when he's gonna start, because I think that'll come out of whatever happens next.
Sure.
Retro's grant, thanks to Jim, we got that submitted he was really good at reminding me that it was, had to be submitted like the day before, because we all get sidetracked, um, so it did get submitted and, um, that was enough.
Okay.
And I don't really have anything to add on the land use map project because for whatever reason, the drafts that we had, there was never an update that got back to SRF, so then they gave the drafts to Brent and I guess they assumed that it was closed and so we'll have to work with Brett and Jim to get those updates that should have been included to get them included, so, that's it.
Brian, what do you got?
Alright, so I wanted to start by having a discussion around the utility building. Uh, we are, we had a presentation, uh, this last week. Uh, we are, we had a presentation, uh, this last week, on Thursday, uh, Wednesday and Thursday, from Black Mountain Software. Uh, and the proposal was to just get a look at some of their software capability and what they have, and Vance and Matea and I participated in day one, which is the utility building and permitting, uh, functionality, and day two was more of the accounting functionality that's provided within Black Mountain Software. I think we all agreed, we had a follow-up recap session on Friday, and we all agreed that, and Dave, uh, participated on, on Thursday as well. So Friday, we, uh, we recapped and we agreed that the utility billing software is gonna be a significant improvement, uh, to help automate, uh, some of the processes we're gonna have. So there's the A C H capability, that's built into the software. Uh, there's the, uh, E B D S, which is the billing document, basically the, the, the solution that connects to the credit card, uh, credit and debit card, so they, we basically have an interface to talk to the company that allows a resident to set up an account with them, to debit their credit card, and we just collect that money from, from that account, or from that company. So, uh, there's some, uh, setup with that. So, uh, the proposal right now, uh, is that we would like to select, uh, Black Mountain Software. Uh, we, we did entertain, uh, our partner, let me, let me step back a moment. We stepped back and, and asked our partner for other integrating applications, Diamond Mountain, uh, no, Diamond.
Software.
Diamond.
Just Diamond Software.
Yeah, just Diamond. Is it, does Diamond Software? Um, we asked them for input and they never got back to us after repeated attempts to, uh, ask for quotes and input. Obviously, they don't want our business, so, uh, we said, no, we're not gonna leave and talk to them anymore. Uh, and Summit basically came back and said, you know, those, those are probably the two most popular. There are others, but they're way more expensive, targeted at larger municipalities. And this is, you know, Black Mountain is the most common small-town, uh, software, uh, out there in the market right now. And we liked functionality capability that they showed us, so we, we felt, basically had a unanimous vote, uh, from our committee to select that as our utility billing. The, so, the, the purchase price for the software itself is twelve thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixty-five. Um, there would be an annual fee for this, so, which is four thousand nine hundred, which is a little bit higher than we would like, um. And we'll, we'll work on that to see what we can do there. Uh, but there is, there's some debate whether we would do the one-time conversion. Uh, if, if, so we would try and, and negotiate that to, to try and reduce that overall cost, just if, can we do some of that import ourselves versus paying someone else to do that, getting import of the, what, eight, hundred and fifty, nine hundred records? Custom records that we would import there. So, all told, from a budget standpoint, twenty-one thousand three fifty would be, uh, the software that we would accrue, uh, to get that, uh, capability in place. Uh, the one prerequisite, uh, Jimmy, is that the software that we do pick for the meter reading, we do need to make sure that they have an interface, uh, and so when, if you have some specs and so forth for the, that software that you would expect to recommend.
Yep.
Uh, I need to know that so that I can ask, uh, Black Diamond if they support that format and that company. I was just looking at it.
Black Mountain?
Right. No.
You put both of them together.
What?
It's okay.
You said Black Diamond.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
He's thinking Valentine's Day.
I was gonna say something, skiing or something, I don't know.
It's a mashup, it's a mashup date, so. Um, and the proposal is to, um, fund this, fund this from the, uh, uh, the, the, the S R F line that we would use to, for paying the water meter. So this is part of that process to, uh, get that in place, so we would include this cost for the software, uh, in that S R F loan application. So, uh, at least the first year, to get us through the first year.
So is there any other incidentals that we need to put into that loan to, down the software? Do we need any other hardware?
Well, you're including that hardware and so forth for the meter reading and so forth.
What was your budget amount on this one? I, I can update it.
Uh, twenty-one, three fifty-five.
Twenty-one, three fifty-five.
Twenty-one, three fifty-five is the quote that we have right now. Uh, I'm gonna try and reduce that if I can. Reduce that if I can with one-time conversion, do our own data imports and so forth, so I'm, I'm gonna lean on them a little bit more.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll input that in the estimate.
Yeah, if you put that in the budget, we come in under, then we got.
Yeah, 'cause we come in under, that's fine, it's just we don't wanna get caught with something else that we might have missed, though.
The only, the only question mark that I have is this billing company, uh, for the, the credit card piece. My understanding is the resident that hooks up to that account, they incur the cost of taking those. But there's, is there some per transaction or fee that, I just need to get some clarification on that.
Yeah.
But we need to, but that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be much, okay?
It's, it's not like you could, uh, and I'm just gonna ask, 'cause this is probably a dumb question, 'cause I don't know, but it's not like you could just set up an account at, say, Alaris, and then everybody from, like, you know, no matter where we bank, could just do like a, a transfer to your account at Alaris?
That's the A C H, that's the A C H capability, so.
Okay, so this is something else.
If you wanna pay from your checking account, we'll have a forum that you can submit to Vance and Matea. And with your bank account routing information, we would enter that here, and then basically, when your bill gets generated, it automatically just debits. We create an A C H file that we hand to the bank, and they do that direct deposit, or direct withdrawal, I should say.
So it's not, so you're talking about a direct withdrawal, not where you would set it up in your bill pay to automatically pay, which is a different service?
So the automatic bill pay would be through the B D S.
Actually come to us. So the A C H is literally?
Like an automatic withdrawal, or the other one where you're doing bill pay, that's a different.
You do that yourself.
Yeah, we still get a piece of paper. So, so for example, then we're have, getting the module to do the electronic bills too. So what we would do is we would email you the bill, say, don't pay this, because we're automatically withdrawing these, this fund, this amount, on such a date.
Yep.
So you no longer need to take action, as long as you set up with the city that we can auto-withdraw that, just like any other utility bill, we just pull that on a specific date.
Can I still just pay you the loan?
Yep. Yep.
We may put a, for you though, Russ, we may put a fee.
Or could you, could you pay your bill pay?
Why can't it automatically?
Could you, could you do, uh, your bill pay?
Absolutely, I mean, the check, the bill pay, just, you, a check arrives here and then she just logs it, just another option.
No, 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 not a check, no.
There's like three options.
Like you go pay, like you go and then your checking account, you just said pay, and you just put the account number, you pay.
'Cause we still get checks like that, we get checks in the mail from bill pay.
Oh, you know.
The banks send them some physical check.
Isn't that something?
Yeah.
Paper trail, gotta have a paper trail.
Like I said, it's a dumb question, 'cause I don't really know how that works, right?
Yep. So, anyway.
Thanks for answering my question.
So that's, uh, so, do we need a vote on that to approve that expenditure, or?
You said you're putting that in the project?
Because we're putting that in the overall budget for that. I don't, I don't think so, I don't know. That's why I'm asking. We've already approved. Okay, all right, all right, good, we're done with that, all right. So the next one is the, uh, rate. Did we, you and I agree on the final number? Yes. Okay, good. What do you mean?
You guys didn't high-five it?
Okay, so why am I not seeing it? Okay, I had that amount here, and for whatever reason, it's not here. There it is, in the bottom, is it? Well, yeah, that's it. So the one chain, no, this isn't, no, it isn't.
Okay, just talk to it, Brian.
Well, I, I need to look up the amount, 'cause.
I haven't seen it.
You got it? Okay, why don't you, why don't you read it there?
Seventy dollars and?
Uh, current amount, thirty-one twenty-eight, and this is for Rivers Edge residents, thirty-one lots. Current amount, thirty-one dollars, twenty-eight cents, the amended new amount, seventy-one dollars and forty-five cents.
Per month?
Yes.
Yep.
Wow.
They knew that going in.
So the re, the re, okay, I got it, I got it here, I'm pulling it up. So the, the issue, the issue was that we were, um, pretty significantly undercharging. So, there, again, we were, we were losing money.
Yep.
On those rates for Ri- Rivers Edge, so that was the adjustment that we had to make to that rate structure. So that was the only change, uh, to the resolution model that we had, so.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's seventy-one forty-five plus the garbage charge as well.
Correct.
So it's.
Yeah, so it would be eighty-six.
Yes.
Eighty-six and change. Would be the overall utility bill. But the point is, is that, that's, that is to break even with the expected costs we have. Plus, uh, there, there is some expected maintenance that goes along with that, so we, this is taking some money for the, the three-to-five-year maintenance work that goes along with that Rivers Edge.
Yep.
Um, uh, equipment that we would have in place, 'cause, yep. So, my request is, Dave, John, if you have any questions?
No, I was just asking for Dave answering.
So, do we probably need a vote to approve this updated resolution, correct, Lucas?
Yep, 'cause we got numbers.
Because the numbers did actually change from what they were before.
So are you making a motion or someone else?
So moved. Okay, I'll move. Okay, Dave's gonna make a motion. Got second?
You bet.
John's gonna do second on the resolution, okay? I guess, uh, do we need to do a roll call this one?
We're not spending money, so.
We're not spending money, so we just, it's a conference, it's a vote, right?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there we go.
Right, so.
Good, let's get that done.
Yes, so now the, the new rate structure is in place, so when you get the utility billing, we'll be free to go on that one. All right, so.
Contact Summit immediately, or how do you wanna do that?
You're gonna give a.
I think, let's wait, let's wait until we are ready to, can start the billing.
Yep.
So let's hang on to that.
So does that take effect in?
Uh, what did we say that?
Uh, what month would the new rate take effect?
Did we say May, June somewhere? I don't know.
Probably anything was ever said.
We're anticipating, we don't, I don't think we've actually.
I think we're, we're waiting, we're waiting for the new meters and so forth, 'cause it's too hard for us to, to estimate again, so we're gonna continue the rate until we get the meters, new meters in place.
So for Rivers Edge, that was the question, more specifically, was related to this change, when would that take effect? I'm sorry, I should have been more clear.
We should, we should probably leave that in place until the other rates go into effect as well. Correct, me.
That way everything goes up at the same time.
So let's leave it where it is.
I'd say same thing, let's leave it as it is right now until we get everybody.
Okay.
And then do it, I mean, we're just gonna have to take that one until we get everybody on the same.
We're gonna, we're gonna be getting ourselves a little bit behind, but that's, it is what it is. All right, so, uh, let's move on. Uh, again, I wanna come back to the financial planning discussion that, uh, continuation from the meeting that we had last time. Uh, the change, after discussing this, uh, and doing a little deeper dive on the budgeting for, uh, doing the financial, uh, planning work that, uh, one option was to look at, you know, taking Black Mountain Software, using that as a way to restructure some of our chart accounts and better reporting and so forth. That was one way to do it, uh, of, you know, but it turns out that's a little bit more expensive than we had anticipated, more money than we had planned, so we opted not to, okay. As much as we'd like to have that help us, uh, with some of our reporting and the structure, uh, I still think this is a needed, needed step for us to, to do some re-analysis on our current reporting and documentation and see what we can do to, uh, in, improve some of that, uh, the funding structure and the, the collection that we're doing. So that's, so basically, the, the proposal that I had requested from Ryan and A two S, uh, was to scale this back from, uh, the three tasks which we had before. First task was just to do some, our review and adjustment of the, the city funding structure and reporting that we, uh, so that did change. Uh, and then the, the task two is the, the model planning, uh, or the, the planning model, uh, for creating a, a five-year, uh, so that we can, as we build out our capital improvement plan, we can plug that in, and that helps us, uh, do some better growth analysis. Similar discussion that we just had today, tonight, so this would be, uh, obviously, uh, to me, a, a needed, needed step. And then, uh, there is some documentation deliverable, so that, there were four tasks before, sorry, there's three now, uh, with this. So, uh, with this modification, uh, it actually reduced the, the overall bid, uh, or quote for this work to be just over fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, and the proposal right now, because this is considered a step in the direction, uh, to getting an asset management process in place, uh, that this would be funded from our sales tax revenue, uh, to say, okay, this is, this is going to help us, uh, with our overall, uh, getting infrastructure capital improvement, uh, planning in place, so we can better plan in the future.
How does this work with, uh, the software you were just looking at? 'Cause you were talking earlier about some other modules that are available that you had interest in.
Yep. How, how, would it work, or?
Yeah, do, yeah, do they work together?
The, the Black Mountain would absolutely give us better reporting, uh, but it was more money than we felt that we could spend at this point. Uh, can we evaluate that again in the future? Yes. This would be an interim step to help us adjust what we have, uh, so that it can better set us up for that transition.
But the blue, the blue. Black.
We can't get this right.
Wouldn't deal with your funding model, though, the five, the five-year funding model, that would not.
Right, the five-year funding model would not.
Nope.
So this is, this is a separate funding process that would help us, uh, so that, the, the task two. The task two is really building over and above what the, the accounting software would do.
So would the Black Mountain Software take away task one? And be able to restructure those funds, which is really what, one of the things you were looking at doing? I mean, what, I, I guess what I'm asking is, is it not something that makes more sense to do together? And get those funds restructured, and then have whatever they're going to do work with that, so that it, instead of doing, you know what I'm saying?
Yep, I, I hear what you're saying.
I guess that's, I might ask the question well, but that's.
Yeah, I, I, I know where you're going, I know where you're going, I. I think there's a couple of different things that, I mean, we could leverage. The part of it is we made an investment in the payroll and so forth, the software that we have, that if we switch now, we're, that's gonna cause a fairly significant amount of rework, so we would lose some of what we had already invested. So, I hate to lose that investment in such a, you know, basically one-year timeframe, so I, I hear what you're saying, but it's, it's too soon to make that kind of significant change. So for the small amount of money that the task one would include, I would rather just continue to take this route. It would help prepare us for that transition in the future, but yes, you're right, it would. It, it, it is a bit redundant, I don't think, I wouldn't say it's completely redundant, but it would be a bit redundant.
So what, what would be your plan to do the full transition over that, because I, I mean, it's gonna be, there's gonna be a problem, it's gonna be a problem today, tomorrow, or here for a while.
The first step, the first step was to get the utility building, see how they work, operate, as how they service us as a cus- customer, how their, you know, how their, uh, product works, and get some experience with it, and then another year from now, we would come back and do it, you know, an evaluation again, if it makes sense, if it, 'cause we're paying the hosting cost, then rather than paying twice the hosting cost, we would cut back and some of our other costs, we'd do that in the year. So the proposal was to say, this time next year, we'll come back and do this analysis again. Yep, yep, go ahead.
Ryan Graf, A two S Nexus, uh, thank you again for the opportunity to work with, um, Council. So can I make one request, 'cause it gets hard, either let's get a microphone, or can you go to the?
Yes, sorry, please.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ryan Graf, A two S Nexus, uh, just wanted to say thank you again, uh, for the opportunity, um, to address Ms. May's comment, uh, on how we could interact, the way we are really approaching task one is kind of getting a, a baseline, working with, uh, the city auditing sta- auditor staff, uh, to really kinda fine-tune how they use, uh, the existing fund structure, provide recommendations for better, um, using the fund structure, and then we also do have, uh, quite a bit of experience working directly with Black Mountain, um, with Black Mountain's fund accounting software. And so, uh, you know, as Brian had mentioned, he sees this as kind of bridging the gap, and, uh, you know, this is, I think, to me, this is a little bit new information, I, I'm encouraged by the, the steps that you're taking. And with that in mind, uh, we would also be able to provide, um, insights on how you can start, uh, structuring the fund, um, structure now, structuring the structure, right? Uh, but in, with that in mind, that you would like to continue keeping it open to the transition to Black Mountain, should that prove, uh, appropriate in the future. And so, um, knowing that and with that information, I, you know, I, I see it as, uh, I think to your point, there might be a little bit of overlap. But what we've found working with other communities throughout the state, uh, is that, um, sometimes the initial setup that you get from Black Mountain may not be as tailored to the needs and how, uh, it works best for your. initial setup that you get from Black Mountain may not be as tailored to the needs and how, uh, it works best for your auditor sta- staff here on a day to day basis.
Mr. Graf, I'd like to hear a little bit more about task three that was taken out on the original plan, or the original.
Yeah, uh, task three was, um, kind of a long-term growth scenario, uh, planning that would build on the financial model that we built in, uh, in task two here. Um, we've done that for some other communities and, uh, what we've found is that, as far as a planning tool, it's allows you to better look at, um, the different scenarios, what does it mean when, you know, you have somebody tonight that's, we're bringing on si- potentially have seventy units over the next two or three years as they see build out? Or, um, you know, magnifying that from seventy to however many. And what we had initially, uh, scoped with that and are happy to work with you, uh, whenever you feel appropriate, if you feel appropriate, um, is to continue using that financial model that we'll build here. Uh, should you approve the, the agreement to really look at what it could mean to your overall city finances from, uh, uh, I think you touched on it a little bit, you know, with the stormwater policy, as far as what kind of staff may you need? Um, what does that, when you have the growth, uh, from new developments? Um, what does that potentially mean for tax base, for utility revenue? All of those type of facets as far as, um, how they can help you better see what, uh, the city would be in three to five years or, um, however long you want to continue extending that model out with the projected growth.
To me, it's a pretty easy deal to look at this, and these are the tools that we need. There's no doubt.
It's the forecasting stuff that we need.
Absolutely, we sat here and I, and the questions I had, if I had more information, we're asking for, we're, we're asking for help on this. And leaving task three out, I think is kind of a mistake. And looking at the cost difference between the two, you know, we've, we've raised some tax dollars. And we, we have some money that makes sense for why we ask for tax dollars. We've been collecting it for a year. For us not to start using a little bit of it? I know we've talked about some other.
But I think this would be a good place for it.
Absolutely, it is.
Cause this helps with our forecasting.
Absolutely, it would be. This is the stuff that we need. I, I would, I would make the motion to go back to the original proposal and accept that, and get the ball rolling, and get this done.
And then pay for it out of the.
Absolutely. Pay for it out of the, uh, the, uh, economic twenty-five percent tax.
I thought Brian just said there was a change to this, reduce the cost just a little bit.
Right, so that's, we took off the one task. So that, I just pulled it up here, so there were four tasks before.
Yeah.
And, and I pulled that, and, and I asked Ryan to pull that task three out, which is the targeted growth scenario, which is the, the scenario that, that John is just referring to.
And, and also it had.
Does that reduce it about, sorry, John, it just reduced it about five thousand dollars?
You, you know, I, I've been with Brian and I've been in meetings with Mr. Graf, and, and to get to hear it and learn a little bit, wow. This is, I, Brian's working his ass off and doing good work. I, I trust him wholeheartedly, I, I think this is something that we, we definitely need to get on board with and do.
So then maybe I should know more about what is in this task three?
He was just telling us.
But you were talking about something else, no?
No, I was talking task three hundred percent, that, I, I, that's where I asked for why that was taken out, to give a little more definition of what that did. Cause task three would have been a great tool to have for tonight, you know? It, it, for anything we have coming.
It's really, it's really that growth, I mean, as that territory comes in, we should be looking at, okay, what, from an infrastructure standpoint?
Yeah.
What does it mean to say? Alright, if, if we're gonna have this kind of numbered lots and, and, you know, it gives us an ability to these forecasts somewhat.
Yeah, we need a forecast model, we do need that.
Sharon, it goes to your question, the size lot, the number of lots and density, all that, you know?
I mean, when you talk about forecasting, it's not just terrible gardens, it's River's Edge, it's Lost River.
Yeah, but the point, the point is the model would, is, would allow us to take, to adjust them out based on lots, right?
Where we're lost is, you know, the whole, every time we talk about tax revenue, we don't know what that really means in dollars. And then you have infrastructure cost.
Right.
So, I mean, I, I, I know I asked Brian at the last meeting, where are we gonna fund this out of, because our issue is, was the budget. Right, this isn't something that was in our budget, we were just talking about.
Yep.
Shedling the roof and where are we gonna find six thousand dollars to do that, and okay, if we don't have that, where are we gonna come, come up with this? And yet, utilizing those sales tax dollars, which are there for infrastructure and things of that nature, that's a good place for this to come from. So I'm in favor.
Okay.
So I'll second your motion.
Okay, so John makes a motion?
So I guess the question is, do we go back to the original?
I, I made the motion.
Do you make the motion?
To go back to the original proposal.
And to fund it out of the twenty-five percent sales tax.
Okay.
Sharon, you second that, though?
I second.
Okay, so Sharon is the second on that one, so let's roll call it.
No, I have a que- a question, so, um, uh, timeline, just general wide of timeline. When would you guys do this, or start this, or how long would it take? I know, that's my question is, comment is, since we are this close, much closer to a city administrator, I would like the city, the new city administrator to be somewhat involved in this.
Well, what's your opinion on the?
Your, your request is postponed, your request is postponed. Your request is to wait, maybe there's to wait till it starts.
Are you anticipating a decision?
No, the decision, we're gonna make a decision probably by March one.
Could, could I ask Mr. Graf?
Well, we gotta, we gotta schedule in two, one of our meetings.
Yeah, first you gotta do this initial interview, and then they gotta be able to get on site.
To do that, just, I'm just saying.
I'm gonna be gone two weeks out of the, out of the end of the month, so.
I'm just saying, sooner is better, better than later.
I know, I know, but our objective in the budget was April one, have the person on staff April one, so, that's all.
Well, let's, I, I think that's maybe a good point, let's ask Mr. Graf, cause obviously, this is your first time doing this. What's your role as a city administrator, and with not having one agreed on, what's the right way to go about this, or your recommendation?
You know, I, I think at one point, um, when we had first met on this, and I think it makes a lot of sense to be able to, um, work with the city administrator as far as, um, helping the scenario modeling. Um, when you bring a city administrator on, they're still gonna also have, uh, likely some onboarding, uh, to do to really just understand your community. Uh, I think if, you know, we work, um, with, you know, Vance and Matea, over the next couple of months to build the initial model, uh, to look at the fund structure, and, uh, get that up and running prior to having your city administrator onboard. Uh, this could actually probably be a tool that helps your city administrator understand, um, what you have going on as far as you would have had started having some of the discussions to, uh, to help refine what kind of you might see as growth that you would wanna integrate into the, to the forecast. Um, and so it could, you know, facilitate some of the discussions on your part, so they're tailored, uh, by the time the city administrator comes on. And then provide, uh, an opportunity to work through, um, what that could actually mean in reality, uh, with the administrator. And so, um, you know, if you're projecting April one as the potential start date, um, uh, in all reality, it'll take us a couple of months to put this together, and so, uh.
So that would be, could be a good milestone for you to.
Yeah.
To work.
So some areas, it'll be, be great, some areas you can do some more.
Correct.
Probably all come together at the same time.
Yep, yep, yep.
That's always our hope.
So, we got, we got the motion, the second, roll call of John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Alright, there we go, let's get this done.
Roll call.
Thank you, John.
Yep, we need to get her down.
Um, thank you, thank you, Ryan. So, the last item, and I sent this out, uh, ahead of time, I, here we go, here would be our first, first item to plug through here, the capital improvement plan. I have taken this, I will post this again for everyone to review, uh, I've sent it out on email, uh, but I'm asking the council and, uh, Jimmy, I think, you know, I don't know if you. No, I didn't send this to you, did I? No, I didn't, sorry.
City council.
Um, so, for the city council members and others to look through, make sure that this is, you know, if there's a priority that you wanna apply to some of these projects. I know some of them that we had on twenty seventeen list, and they didn't make it, so, uh, we need to go through this list and prioritize them, put them a number on it. So then we can direct, uh, inter- interstate to begin the process of doing their, uh, list initial. I don't even remember the gas, uh, initial planning, uh, to propose, right?
One, I guess as we were talking and going through this, and we're talking about budgets and everything, would you be able to put on here where you think a fu- the funding source for these would be? Cause some of these are special, some of these are budget, you know, our city budget, some of these are something like that. Like the chip seal, we got a hundred thousand dollars, I assume that's gonna come out of the highway, is that a correct assumption?
That makes sense.
Just to help us, and I can add for the, for the, um.
Okay.
City stuff, or the, the building and equipment.
Well, it would help us, then we can start budgeting per item, but we're gonna get down to that, so we're talking about earlier.
Be helpful, because in some of these areas, when we talked about chip seal last year, they have funds in a separate fund.
Right.
So maybe there's already dollars inside or something.
Sure. And, and again, the chip seal line item is, you're gonna see that on the capital improvement plan from now and evermore.
It's in perpetuity, man.
It's always gonna be there, so we just need to.
You just do some a little bit.
But right, but on the other hand, it's gonna be, you know, I think Jesse ba- made the comment like, if, that the amount that we actually do, that's part of the asset management. Is to say, okay, now we've got X number of str- miles of streets that need to be worked, so that chip seal amount might ebb and flow. But that's all part of the asset management plan to get that in place, so that we can feed that into this model. So, that's, that's the goal. So anyway, that's it, I just get this, I wanted to throw this out there, I will post this, uh, I don't know if we wanna post this for public input yet, or no?
No, that'd be cool, let's.
Review first?
Let's go through it, let's categorize it, and then we'll prioritize it, then we're okay, then we'll, I'll feel a little bit better there, so we're all on the same page.
Just branch it on our website, right?
So, alright, so I will get that updated and I will send it out again.
Sweet, okay, perfect. Alright, I'll run through my stuff here quick. Uh, we met last Thursday, Southwest Metro Transportation Plan Update, we had, uh, Michael Maddox from, um, Metro Project there, plus we had Jason Benson, at Fargo, West Fargo, Planning Departments, um, talking about the roads, uh, what we're gonna do about that. After a couple hours of discussion around the table numerous times, um, we're gonna be getting involved with Metro Project, doing like an eighty, twenty, we got twenty percent of the cost. You know, we talked about here, and, uh, perfect. And we're gonna try and encompass as much of the transportation as we can with this thing, and we could explain them. It's gonna start almost on by one hundred, load a fifty second, we gotta figure out how far east we go on seventy-six, cause that's gonna all play into this, you know? We had a couple of guys from Fargo were saying, you know, well, you guys gotta think long term, it's not just the school, or possible school coming. I said, great, it's a three to eight of all the development that comes with a school, I mean, that's what this is about, it's not just a school, but the school could precipitate more development. How do you move that transportation around, how do you get those vehicles out of there, when you have the school there, it's like a Cheyenne.
I can't even have people to the school, cause that's the.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
You can't, you, right now, we got one road, that's not gonna work.
It's just all, it's just figuring it out, so anyway, that's in play. And I'm gonna be meeting with Jason when I get back from Haiti, again, we're gonna talk some more specifics on some areas and stuff like that.
Getting a timeline at all for when we can actually see something, any idea?
Are you getting started, or?
Yeah.
Well, I think they're gonna be start to talk about it, last month of the meeting on Thursday, so they'll be starting to talk about some of the, where the starting point is.
Do they have a dollar size at all yet?
Twenty, thirty, forty thousand, I don't know yet, that's just kind of a guess.
They were kind of round numbers, cause we're, we're gonna try and do the comp plan update and do the transportation in the city, but as a component of this other bigger project. And then, uh, so.
Okay.
So, that's what we know right now, hopefully we'll know a little bit more after you guys have your meeting. Yeah, yep.
Make sure you put that on your agenda for P and A, update them, before we do this.
Uh, diversion update, they had another meeting last Thursday, doesn't seem like anything really came out of that other, just ongoing events. Um, so, I basically told Jason to just keep us posted, in my absence, if something comes up again, I don't know right now.
Didn't they say this is now into the technical?
Yeah, so it could, I mean.
Are we beginning to meet with the technical part people?
Haven't heard a peep from them yet. No, so, frustration on my part.
Will you tell to Jason to just say, uh, yeah, it better happen?
I'm gonna try and get to this eggs and issues things with the chamber tomorrow, they got a diversion discussion, so all the brass should be there, and then try and have a conversation with them again, like, hey, you know? Don't, don't think of us as a void here, that would not be good, keep us in the loop. So, the only other thing, Jim, that email I got you, can you get me that?
I, I, yes, I have, I just have to send it to you.
Good, okay.
I'll do that in the morning.
Alright, uh, Main Street Initiative update, I sent in the paperwork for that, we are now on the list, it will be coming out here at some point. Alright, so, we'll have a conversation about that. I also got ahold of Jase Beeler and our planning, or our, city planner, John, and I also has met with him, yeah, on Thursday. And I haven't gotten an email back from, to him on that, but anyway, so, things are in play there. I don't know if any of you guys can go February twelve, thirteenth to this Main Street Initiative thing and that they've got going on in Bismarck?
Maybe.
Because we should have somebody go on to this thing.
I would love to go, but I can't.
Yeah, I'm out, I'm out of country, so it's a little bit more of a pain for me to get here.
I can't, I'll get back to you this week.
But anyway, if somebody can do it, that'd be great, because this is, we, we gotta start connecting into this.
More engaging, we get, get the lease, get some of the material back, that'd be awesome.
Oh, it's, I, I don't hear you, Brian. I heard you were in.
Anyway, see if you can make it, if not, we'll try and work something out, but this, we gotta work, this, this is gonna get to be big, so we wanna make sure we're at the top of this thing. Um, city strategy and planning update, we had a great meeting, that was awesome, that was exactly, thanks to Sharon for hosting.
Yep.
Emceeing the whole thing, if you will, I mean, she ran the whole show, was perfect, we got it narrowed down. Things are priorities that we're gonna be, the next time we meet, we're gonna be breaking these down one step further, but the school bonding passing, that is a necessity. We gotta get the word out there, the school bonding thing, when it gets put out there, um, needs to happen.
Should we be publishing our strategy, or, I mean, there's another strategy meeting that's planned, right?
Yep, another one's coming up here in March, this is where we break this stuff, we're gonna break this stuff down.
Given, but. I know. Group hasn't come back with it, you're on the group.
I know, that's what I said, but you just, we're talking.
Do we have a date for the next one?
We're talking in, in the February, I didn't have, we haven't set a date yet.
March.
March.
June. February.
I thought it was end of February, you were talking about.
Yeah, so I thought, end of February, let me look at the calendar again, but we should do something.
We need to schedule.
So who wasn't there?
Me too.
Me too. So the, the, the takeaways from the whole big thing, there was, update the comp plan, get a, update the land use plan, do the water study. Have a funding plan for capital, capital improvement, the SSL phase two, uh, the bond, of course, that was on the top of this. And Economic Development Committee for funding and planning priorities for, for businesses in Dukeville town.
So next time we get together.
Well, I have a stating, you guys are stating that there's a bond, and I agree, I agree, it's probably going to.
It's gonna, at some point, there'll be.
But nothing's even been.
Understand, so, we have, we know this is coming, there's too many kids in school, my, good grief, we're sitting outside doing schoolwork. Yeah, it's crazy, anyway, but it's something that we have to be aware of, and we should be starting to do some community outreach with it, cause it's gonna be there.
Yep.
That's sooner or later, okay, then the next thing is, on Wednesday, I'm outta here till the sixteenth, so Sharon will have the phone.
Well, you won't do it, you have a vacation.
No, right?
I know.
I like Frodo's ring, she gets the phone. The birdie is on her.
Sharon gets the back phone.
Yep, well, that's all I got. Vance, you're up.
Yes, sir. Okay, which one do you want me to? Financials, you know, it's tough to talk numbers at this time of the night, it's.
Honestly, it is.
Will, uh, should we, should we, you know?
No, I mean, next time, why don't you?
We used to do that, the Audit and Propor- Audit and Propor- was first on the agenda, but over the years, it got switched, but so anyway, should I do a recap, or? Do you want me to do it the next meeting, or?
I mean, I think it's next meeting, cause honestly, it's ten.
I'm not sure it's, I've given you guys a fair opportunity to ask me the right questions. Uh, I'm sure you've all taken a look at how we ended up in two thousand seventeen.
So which which document, Vance, which document are you asking us to review?
Well, you know, the balance sheet, if you know.
Okay, so look in the financials, so I'm just, for everyone else, so the appropriations, December, or do you have a summary document?
You posted everything, right?
Yeah, every month.
So which one?
So which one should we be looking at, that's what I'm asking.
End of the year.
So the December twenty-seventh, so there's, the December appropriations, December twenty-seventh.
Well, how about if we look at them and bring questions to the next meeting?
Can we do that?
Perfect.
So.
Because then we can actually really look at them.
So I I, yeah, I kinda started beating you guys up already with some of the things, so, yep, okay. So let's, let's put him on the earlier in the agenda next time, come back.
Vance, well, we just put you after the, after we approve the regular agenda, just put yourself up there and then let's go through that.
And can you tell us which one, or?
So the December twenty-seventeen.
Is this a meeting that is for a minute, or the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's.
Where?
Actually, no, it's in a different.
Yeah.
It's in a different area.
Is it under annual financial statements?
No, well, no, so council working documents, financials, and then annual financial statements.
That's what I just said.
Right? Sorry.
And there's three different, there's three different.
So there's three files there.
Yeah.
Appropriations.
Each month.
Balance sheet, and then revenues.
But by month, two?
By month, so look at the December twenty-seventeen.
I just wanna make sure, okay.
So all three files.
Okay.
And then in addition to that, I know Brian and I and uh Dave have talked about some of the different changes that we're gonna debate as far as how I should be reporting stuff, especially in the P and L. Auditors have always told me, you know, you're misusing uh disallowed expense way too much, and we're gonna tweak a lot of that stuff. You guys, put your thoughts together, send them to me ahead of time, and I'll make any change to the P and L that you wanna see.
Should we, how about we do this, should, you want us all to bombard you, or should we have a clearing house to be cut first and then send them to you?
I I don't care.
Otherwise, you might get redundancy and it might get confusing.
Well, true.
That that's all.
That's fine.
But, yeah, as I got a couple ideas, and Brian and I have talked about it too, so.
Brian, you and I, yeah?
Mother of pearl, okay.
I know, how about this?
I didn't mean, I didn't mean to just push you into, I'm just saying.
I'll do it.
No, oh, like you're gonna out of country too.
I know, but you've got enough stuff on your plate, and then it's around to the operations, so let me.
Okay, you wanna do that?
So let's send them all to me.
Let's send them all the, all the questions to Dave, though.
Okay, and then pay a special attention to every time I, when you look at the consent agenda, twice a month, take a close look on how I interpret the way I appropriate things.
I know.
It's clear in there where all your money is going, so you know, take a look at all that.
The other thing that I asked Vance, you're gonna post the project spreadsheet as well, correct?
Yes.
So there is a spreadsheet that has the breakdown of all the projects and the income and expenses, the detail there, I would propose that I'll create a pivot table on front of that bad boy so we can.
Yep.
So that, we got it right here, so we're, so when you get that posted, send out an email.
When do you want that posted?
We'll do it here. In that financial folder, yeah. Just put it somewhere out there and we'll find it.
We'll do it this week.
Do twenty eighteen now, so it's broken down by year, start start separate year.
You also, is there one other document that the budget actual, do we have a budget actual?
Well, it it's the, the act is the far right thing, probably, that's our budget amount. You gotta go to the uh P and L, the revenues.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, okay, why is this? The revenue side, just pick December.
Okay, see the year-to-date budget, each month, as I send these statements out to you guys, you can do your comparison each month, just take a quick look at it. We came out really well in revenues. Uh yeah, that that's the best I'm showing you guys. There's no comparison between years, yeah, which we may get to.
So yeah, one of the, one of the side questions I've got on this is um the fellow, I can't, Paul, um from Cast Kines doing our assessment of stuff, yeah?
Okay, sorry.
Is he gonna be, is he gonna be doing?
Yes.
All of Horace, he's gonna chunk it out?
Yes.
For as far as doing his assessments, is he gonna take like a block of of Horace and come up with an, uh is he, I don't know what his pattern is, that's what I'm trying to find.
I know that I know either.
Okay. If, it might be something we wanna broach with them, and here's where I'm going with this. If we know what he's gonna be doing, it helps us a little bit more when we're trying to get down to the budgets, because then I can get an anticipation of what he's gonna be doing. We can probably, he can give us an idea of what the assessed value percentage might be going up, and we can give us a little bit more idea on that number. So as we're looking out a little bit further.
Why don't I reach out to him and see what he's got?
Yeah, I, it's more of a curiosity thing, so we, it might help us when we start getting down the road with this a little bit more.
Sounds good. Uh, a couple of the things, uh uh I believe it was Mr. Fendline who asked us, Matea, to uh review the holidays holiday schedule for the city employees, which we.
Their document here, or no?
Yeah, um right, it's a blue one.
Top one of mine was.
I'm not seeing it, sorry.
Did yours refresh?
Oh. Oh, one of those issues.
Stay fresh, man.
Apparently. Whoa, look at that. Uh Matea did a search at State North Code, these are approved accepted holidays by the state, uh asking the board if if that's where we should be at with this. Uh there's two, we we always did not recognize Martin Luther King Day. Uh that's kind of a poor way to phrase it, because it's not what the day is about, but we worked on Martin Luther King, we've always always worked on President's Day. But they are now added in there, if you guys wanna go ahead with that, in approvals.
Yeah.
So we put them.
Well, I was gonna say, would it be, would it be a case where, I mean, is it these holidays, is there floating holidays? Or is it, I mean, and and it's a conversation, cause sometimes there's certain holidays plus floating holidays, sometimes it's there are certain ones of these holidays that can be optional, so if you choose to work on the holiday, then you could take an alternate day.
These are dates when the the office would be closed.
Yes.
Well, I understand that.
Right, so.
But the guys would also be off, right?
But I, but.
And well, and if we have to get, the state law requires if we recognize them as a holiday, and we call them in, then don't we pay double time?
Absolutely. Someone is on call all the time.
Right, but I'm just saying, if they come in, they get paid double pay on these, it's twelve holidays.
Mm-hmm, yes.
But these are state recognized.
Right, right.
And then so every other city in the state, well, most of them do, we should be.
And we, and we have, just so I state this right, three weeks vacation for each employee's role, right?
That is correct.
So.
And five days sick.
I'm just gonna make a statement, uh I thought I had really good benefits like that Bobcat, but these are way better than ours, so I'm okay with the holidays, I just don't wanna add anymore, sorry. It's twelve days plus fifteen days plus another five, so, which five, I, it's sick day, that's.
The one that's interesting is Good Friday, that one kinda does surprise me.
That's always a state holiday. It's been that way for, oh yeah, for easily the last ten years since I've been checking to state holidays, it's always been. I mean, I think the one that surprises me is, oh. I guess they don't surprise me, but I don't know, they didn't take them all, they take an alternate instead of that day.
Yes.
The only one that's added is President's Day, it would hit right now.
So do you need us to vote and approve these?
Yes, we have to.
So that's why I was gonna say, so we're all okay with this.
If Brian makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Dave makes a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 I'm just, I'm thinking, I'll bet you President's Day.
Is the only one that's added this year.
And is that a meeting day?
It is.
No, we're doing the day after.
Right.
I already, I already got that squared away, it's a day after.
I did not know that, alright.
Marking this for March.
Okay, uh the last thing is, Mr. Fracassi did ask me to mention, mention that April sixteenth will be tax legalization meeting, he will be here with his staff. Uh more on this as we get closer.
Heads up.
Okay, so is that for?
That's for the people who are in here.
I know, but but what, I just don't understand, if we're doing a tax legalization on your property taxes, that's gotta be for the coming up year, right? But I've already paid my potential pay for my property.
When you open your December tax statement, you can, that's the opportunity to come in.
Right.
And review that with the uh, with the uh.
Okay, so I would have had to pay a portion of it, and I could pay the other portion, or if I paid all of it, my property tax changed, I would get a potential refund or whatever.
It has been known to happen, from what I've heard.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, I just stand with it for, okay.
Alright, anything else?
I just have a question. Are we gonna have a forum on that, the day after President's Day?
What day is it?
What is?
The twentieth.
The twentieth? It's Tuesday the twentieth.
February twentieth?
February.
Right.
I will not be here.
I will not be here.
Well, he always has said that it's always the day after.
Really?
Exactly, Jim, do they?
The ones, the ones with the question.
Yeah, I do have a, no, I get you.
I will be here. Alright, at least right now, I'm scheduled to be here.
Alright, we'll be here, we're good.
Which brings up a very good question.
Are we, are we done? Are we adjourned or?
I don't know.
No, 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 did we, oh, did we vote yes on that?
Yes.
We did.
Yeah.
Go so, we're going so fast to the end, sorry.
Don't you remember being here?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Who would adjourn?
Nobody yet.
Not yet, I was gonna say, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
I wanna ask a question.
Ask.
The question is, have we put on a calendar all of the um council meetings for the rest of the year? So that we have the dates that already picked around any type of holiday.
It's on there, it's on Chair Plan.
Not around holidays, no. Cause we just did the holidays.
I think what we're gonna do, guys, is, I mean, I don't know if we gotta vote on this or not, but if any of these holidays fall on one of our Mondays, it's the next day. If we have to put that into a.
State organ says. Is that if the
Yeah.
The state office is closed, then your city meeting is supposed to move to the next day.
Yep, so.
That's fine, I just want a date, so that we should get it out on our website ahead of time, of all the dates that our meetings are.
If you guys, if you guys don't use this, this, there's the city council calendar, we should be using this to put all of our meetings on the city council calendar.
My vacation on there?
Huh?
My vacation, I I thought I put it all on there.
Okay, that was my question.
So there are a couple of different calendars, there's, there's one at the top level, so if we wanna use this one for the city calendar, we can definitely use this one.